Late here, we had a late agenda planning. So would you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the August Southeast Tech Board Meeting. We have one board member absent, Board Member Parker. It doesn't look like we have any people signed up to address the board. So we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the July 8th meeting to have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Whoops, sorry. My phone, I didn't even do a timer. Somebody's playing with my phone, I swear.
I didn't.
I have a motion by Board Member Tulkey and a second by Board Member Ryder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move on to the approval of agenda. Do you have a motion for approval of agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Board Member Baker, second by Board Member Ryder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any conflicts of interest? There's nothing in our board. So seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of the consent agenda items A, B, C, and D.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Board Member Ryder, second by Board Member Baker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to the reports of the President.
President Mickelson, members of the board. My name is Tracy Knoller. I'm the Executive Director of Student Affairs and Institutional Effectiveness at Southeast Tech. I'm here to provide you the strategic plan update. Every year, we do an update to let you know what's been happening with the strategic plan, where we are in our as this implementation. Towards the end, there are several things I'll need to have you acknowledge and or approve in order for us to continue on with that strategic plan. So I'll go through that as we go through it and I'll try to go very quickly through some of these. But if you have questions, you can either stop me when I'm in the middle of it or at the end. So what I'm going to do is run through some of the different areas of the strategic plan, and one of them is employee involvement. We're trying to get more of our employees involved in strategic planning, and we do that by assigning the plan to different teams. Then we have all the, well, many of the people on the campus involved in those teams. So they take over, they work on the strategic plan, and then they present it to the futures team. We also have a faculty forum now that Dr. Valdez has started, and they do, anything has to do with the academics, faculty are involved in that, all the full-time faculty are involved. So we're really starting to get a lot of employee involvement. We won't have another measure on this until this spring. That's when we do the survey again, and then we're going to see if people think they are more involved in the strategic plan than they have been in the past. The second one is collegiate experience and the use of the hub. We are looking at trying to give our students more of a collegiate opportunity, and so we're connecting with other colleges and campuses. Our goal was to at least have one. We had three different ways they did. They were involved in a basketball tournament that's across the state, and we had students participate. We invited them to come to our DISC golf tournament, and we had several colleges that participated. And then we also had one of our organizations actually go to a national competition, or not competition, but national event, and they were involved in that. And we have some more for next year. They're going to be involved in our auto show, and we're looking at some other activities. As far as the hub, we are way past the number we were looking at for the hub, but a lot of those are things like the mayor did his city, or was it called the? Yeah, it was called the?
State of the City or something.
State of the, yeah, State of the City address. Mike Rowe was there. We had our 50th anniversary there. We had the legislative breakfast there. We had a Build Dakota for all those, an event there with all the students there. It was really great, great opportunity to celebrate their success. So we're finding lots and lots of ways to use the hub. Student success retention, we're always trying to find ways. One of the exciting things about our fall-to-fall retention, you'll see it's in green. That means we've met the target. We won't change the target, we just want to continue to meet it, but we met that 70%. We are constantly trying to find ways we can support students. And one of the ways we're even doing that with the Build Dakota or any of the other scholarship programs is focusing on those students and really providing them any kind of support that they can use in order to make sure they're successful. We've also revised, we're going to be revising the student success summer course and our academic recovery course and the way that we do academic recovery, so we can catch those students early, get them a plan, and make sure that they're being successful. So we're very pleased with that. As far as the increase in the AAS Diploma Certificate Awards, you'll see it's in red, which means we're below 80% of the target. However, one of the biggest things we've done is we've added a lot of certificate opportunities for students, and that's going to help us to increase that number, and we'll talk about that later. Faculty credentialing and program accreditation. Program accreditation, these are external creditors who look at our programs. We are at 15, we want to be at 16. One of the reasons we're at 15 is the New Med Program is we're no longer offering that program right now, so that dropped us one. Diesel used to be certified, but now we're working to get that back. We had some change in staff and so forth, so we had to put it off a little bit. But we're going to have some more, like medical assistant will be coming up, and we're looking at our business programs getting an external accreditation as well, which we'd be the only one in the state to have it. So that's what we're looking for in there. And then we always maintain our faculty credentialing, that's always at 100%, or it should be. One of the things, however, that's happening now is our Higher Learning Commission accreditation requires us to not only have them credentialed overall, they have to be credentialed for particular courses. So for example, even if you have your MBA, if it's a real estate course, if you have no certification in real estate or background in real estate, you shouldn't be teaching that class. And HLC has now gone to that course level. So we're working on a process where we can assure, and we do, but we're going to work in a process where we can prove that we are constantly doing that. Stay there facilities and technology. This is just some ideas or some of the things that are happening. I did want to put on there the input opportunities. Faculty and staff have lots of opportunities to provide input on what kind of technology we need at Southeast Tech. And so those are listed at the top. Improvements, you'll see our firewall, the laptop refresh. Did a lot this last year with employee data security training, which is a huge deal right now, making sure people aren't opening emails they shouldn't be opening and so forth. And that'll continue on to next year. We are looking at a core syllabi software that will be implemented this coming year that makes sure that all of that information's in there and it's all consistent, which is very important for students. And then faculty improvements, we'll have the Wood Center addition for the Vet Tech program that will be coming. The Technology Center parking lot is done, the portion that got done is done. And then Terry Avenue expansion, which is part of the new high school. Leveraging partnerships, this has a lot to do with our student enrollments. And so this is our opportunity to try to increase those enrollments. You'll see where we're in the red for FY '19 in terms of fall student enrollments, but we were in the yellow before then. And it's a hard prediction to see where we're going to be this coming fall until we actually get that first week. Last year, we had a larger summer melt, which means students we expected to show up and they didn't show up. And I know admissions is working really hard to make sure that doesn't happen again, to make sure those programs are full. And so we'll see how that goes. I did want to point out the very bottom one, I think that's a good one. We want to increase 5% per year Sioux Falls High School grad enrollments. That's directly from Sioux Falls to us. And we did reach the goal for this past year. We'll see what this next year is like, if we can continue that. But we do want to get that quicker. And I think our career coach, our internship coordinator, Classroom Two Careers, Avera Academy, all those are going to help us to do that. High school student perspective preferences. This is a way to just find out, well, what are students looking for when they're trying to find a college to go to? We've partnered with StayMats, that's Ruffel, Noel, Levitts, Blend Interactive, Lawrence &amp; Schiller, and Omni, and those are all companies that do a lot of work in these areas, and they can provide us input and ideas of what students are looking for. We are redoing our website, and it says redesign, it's pretty much, it is a brand-new website. And so when that comes on, that will use a lot of the information we've gathered so that it will be a better match for what students are looking for when they're trying to find a college. And then our marketing campaign itself is making changes as well. Leverage high school teachers and counselors. We're working with a career coach to build more connections with the Native American population here in the Sioux Falls area to get those students more connected. I think the Classroom Two Careers and the Avera Academy are great ways for us to connect with the teachers and the counselors. And we always are reaching out to the counselors and teachers, trying to find ways to make better connections with them, not only in Sioux Falls, but in the surrounding regions. So we'll continue to do that. But we're also looking at ways we can expand that to get that connection even stronger. Communication support for parents. We do have, Career Coach does parent sessions at all of the Sioux Falls School District schools, so that's a great way for us to connect with parents as well. On AAR days, we have a panel for parents, and they love it because they learn so much about what's going to happen with their student when they come to Southeast. The Build Dakota Signee Registration is another way. And then the admissions communication funnel even directly markets to those parents as well as to the student. Alumni as promoters, this is a new one. This was put off because we were doing the capital campaign. Now that that is off and running, we're going to start working more on our alumni. You may hear some more about that in a little while, but we do have a plan in place on some things we can do to better connect with our alumni and get them to be stronger supporters and advocates for Southeast. Communicate programming to partners. This is a focus for the External Stakeholder Relationships Team for this coming year. We don't have anything we've been doing with this one. It isn't that we aren't already doing this, we're already doing it. What we really want to do is take what we're doing and make it into a process so that it will continue no matter what. Somebody else, brand new comes in, we can show them this is how we do this to make sure it happens. That way, no, nothing gets left out, or we don't stop doing something that was really effective, we continue to do that. Communication with school districts. Again, some of the things we do, regularly scheduled counselor and administrator communications take place on-campus council events. There's two on-campus council events that take place, one in the fall and one in the spring. And then we take tour groups anytime they're wanting to go meet students. Utilize data for program development. We did several things with programs. We've always used data when it comes to programs, but we've really made it more of a focus. We have a brand-new new program development process. Our education design and delivery team, which is made up of faculty, staff, and administrator, went through and created a brand-new process internal to make sure we're covering all the things and making sure we're sure we want to start a new program. The Quality Improvement Program, every program at Southeast, over the next three years, we'll go through this. It's a very intense process where they go through all their data, from their enrollment numbers to their retention assessments, equipment, they meet with their advisory committees, and they go through, and they really decide, how could we make this program better? Once they decide that, then they will have a plan that they'll implement for the next three years to make those changes. And then we have strategic planning online, which is a software that we use. It provides us with a planning module and an assessment module so we can track what's been going on. Optimal catalog of programs. You'll see that we're in the green on this as well. We are adding a lot of new programs. A lot of those are certificates, which provides us more exit points for students with them still getting something for the time that they have spent at Southeast. So we're above the number. You'll see all the changes that have taken place, those that we've added each year, those that have been removed. But overall, we are providing more opportunities for students, either in brand-new programs or in expansions of current programs. Gateway services. One of the areas we're really trying to reach out to is our non-white enrollments. We are still in the red in their area, we still have a ways to go. We've got some opportunities that we think will be helpful with that. Aspire to Tech is one where we can help them to gain enough skills to move on. We need to get more students involved in that. We are looking at, is there a way we can provide more of a coordinator? So once they leave the Sioux Falls or any high school and they come to Southeast, we have somebody who takes them and says, I'm going to help you through this process, not only to get enrolled, but through the entire time they're at Southeast Tech. So we're looking at ways to provide that as an opportunity. You'll see the fall-to-fall retention, not bad. We're in that yellow range. We want to get to 68%, but actually, 66% is a really solid retention rate. So I feel really good about that, but we would like to get it up to the 68%. College articulation, we are looking at ways we can have our students go on to higher ed. We have a lot of articulation agreements already. This only talks about getting new ones. You'll see that we're in red for the in-state articulation agreements. There are a number of them out there. In fact, there's probably, well, there's six alone with SDSU, or even more than that with SDSU. We've got some with DSU. Those are still in the works, and so I expect we're going to see that number change next year. As far as the out-of-state one, we do have one that we started with the University of Northwestern. It's in... I have my notes here, so I can look at them. It's in St. Paul. And the one we have right now is in business, but they are looking at wanting to connect with us in our nursing and possibly some other programs as well. So we're working more on finding ways to collaborate, not only in-state but out-of-state. Maximize the foundation impact. We're increasing the number of sponsored scholar recipients. And if you know what that is, if you have Build Dakota, which is the free ride, but we can use sponsored scholar to pay for part of it, and they work for that company. We've went up to 69 students this past FY '19. That number is going to be even higher. It's going to be, I believe, over 100 that will have an FY '20. So we're going to see a nice big jump in that one as well. So this is a great opportunity for us to connect not only with industry, but to give them what they need. Grants. We, FY '19, we had our second city grant for $250,000. We had one the previous year also. Bring Your A-Game Training, the state provided us with funding so we could train our people on Bring Your A-Game, which is a soft skill training. Potential grants, I only put a couple on here that I was aware of at the time. The city grant, we did apply again for $200,000. Was on a phone call just the other day, and we had to do some adjustments on our application, but I'm pretty sure we'll get it again. So that would be exciting to see. We're also working with the drug court as a possible program for them, where there would be some training that we would provide for those people who have gone through drug court. We are also looking through the foundation, we'll hear that maybe more in a little while here, but the possibility of contracting with the grant writers so we can get more of these grants. Capital campaign, that will come up here in a little while. You'll see, hear more about that, but basically, where I, at the time I did this, it was at 3.2 million, and our goal was 6.2 million, so it's doing very well. Questions? Wow. How long? Did I do good?
You did great. It's the second time I've got to see it, which is good, it's a little different. I just want to say to Southeast Tech from us as the school board is that we want to make sure we are doing everything to be a great partner with you through this, you know, the K through 12 school districts and so forth. So, you know, coming to us with, to make sure that we're optimizing our concurrent or dual enrollment programs with you and maybe trying to install more of the concurrent enrollment. Now that the seniors are taking the NCRIC tests, we've talked about that, how can that information be shared and allowed to be used with you guys? Making sure that we're your best partner. We want you to partner with other high schools, but we want to be your best partner.
Yeah, and I think the thing, you know, a couple of things with that is, I think the NCRIC could be a really great thing, even for students just going out with it. One of the things that I've talked to Josh Hall about, and I mentioned at the meeting, is when to be exciting if, especially those students who aren't necessarily thinking about going on to higher ed, or at least not the four-year. Maybe they're thinking of just going to a two-year. But when to be exciting if before they left high school, they were certified in something that they left and they already have a skill that they can take that paper to them and say, I'm ready to go. Or if I don't want to do that, I've got to step up to go on to get more education. And I think that should be a goal. And I think sometimes we still fight within the district and with parents and with students, this idea, I need to go to a four-year, I need to go to a four-year. And we need to make sure they understand, there are so many more options and jobs that are out there for a two-year than there would even be for a four-year. And we're not saying you can't do the four-year, just do the two-year and then build from that. So I think it's really exciting to think, wow, if they could leave and have a certificate party in their hands, what a great thing. I think even the NCRIC helps with that. But if it could be specifically a CNA or welding or IT or anything like that, that's just a step up for them when they go in the job market.
And educating our students and parents about what those, you know, the goal, whatever certificate they end up with, what that actually means and what the concept is.
So I would say that's one thing you could help with, is just helping us to figure out how to get that word out to, I think it's teachers, it's staff, parents, it's, you know, especially low-income or first-generation parents who know nothing about higher ed. They really need someone to help them understand what it is and what it can do for them. It's going to take a while. And I didn't talk a lot about Avera Academy and Classroom Two Careers, but that is two great opportunities to start doing that, because that's a key focus group. And if we can find ways to expand that kind of a program and provide that option for more, we know from Learners to Leaders, and I'm sorry, I don't know if you know all these groups, but if we can find ways, because we know from Learners to Leaders, their high school graduation rates were higher, their, the percentage that went on to higher ed was larger, higher, and their graduation rates from either a two-year or four-year were higher. So we know it works, there's no question. We just need to get it out there for more and more students to experience it. And low-income, first-generation, English is a second language, all of that group that gets left out, we know the four-year are going to go to the four-year. We know the high ACT students are going to go on. That's okay. It's the other group that we really got to focus on and make sure that they go get a skilled training, not just get a job.
I think a couple of things. If you had a student that left high school with a certificate, no matter what it was in, I think it also instills in that student some confidence.
Yes.
And their ability to go on, and not just go on, but to go on and be successful. And so that's a really big deal for a 17, 18-year-old who maybe, like you said, is a first-generation person who never, doesn't have somebody to look at to say they went and did it, but they can say, I achieved this already, imagine what else I could do. So do we have any sort of partnerships with the Multicultural Center in regards to trying to increase that population?
Yeah, through the Hublin Learning Center. We have offered and do classes at the Multicultural Center too, so we have that connection. One of the things I think that would be really exciting to get more involved is when Avera McKinnon found out about this opportunity, one of the things they said is, we need to increase the diversity of our employees. But more importantly, we have great diversity to some degree, but they're all at this level of job. And you go up any higher, and there's no reflection of diversity at all. So they want to take this level employee and say, let's build them up. And so when they heard we had this program, they're thinking, hey, if we can find a way to send them to your program, and we can build them up from maybe being a custodial staff to being a CNA and maybe to an LPN, we can start pulling them up.
Sure.
And those are the kinds of things, but we need to get that word out more, that this is an opportunity and get them connected. And one, it takes time, but it also takes, we can't market with adult education money, that's not allowed. But it does take that marketing, getting out there. So WIOA has meetings every month, and they have put it on their agenda a couple times where they've told them about Aspire to Tech. That helps, but I still think we need to find more ways to get it out there.
Yeah, I'm just thinking if there's other, you know, whether it's nonprofits or other organizations that work with, even if it's specific populations of people, they might be good, a good way to network. And I don't know how you, maybe the Multicultural Center has a list of those, or maybe there's different community organizations that maybe are watching or, you know, have a context somehow, but it would be great to get somebody, whether it's you or somebody from Southeast Tech, to be able to go and do a lunch and learn on...
I think that would be great.
What we have to offer.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I just think there's so many great things that are going on, and how do we get people to be aware of what their options are, so.
Thank you. And perhaps new marketing material, because I am not sure what you all incorporate in that, but looking at that data analysis, particularly what the debt load to repayment would look like in light of the salary differentiation between GED, four-year degree, and sort of what that looks like for skilled labor, with the context of skilled labor.
I don't think sometimes parents even realize, you can do one semester of welding, it's all it takes, and you're going to go out and get $30,000, $40,000 a year and benefits besides, but they don't even realize that's an opportunity. That's not that difficult.
Right. If they're not realizing it, perhaps that's one component of your marketing strategy.
Right.
That's interesting data.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the report. Good information.
So I do have several things that I will need you to do. One is, I'm just going to write them through them all, and then you can decide I want to do it. Acknowledge the report itself. The second is approve the continuation of the mission statement. So I think I better at least read it to you, so you know what the mission statement says. I will ask this every year in case for some reason you say, wait a minute, we think the mission statement needs to change. That can always happen, but usually you don't do that till the plan is done, and then you revise or look at it again. So our current mission is to educate individuals for dynamic and rewarding careers that promote lifetime success and meet the workforce needs of our region. The next one is strategic plan continuation for this coming year. And in fact, the last one kind of fits in there too, I'm saying not only for this coming year, but I'm going to request, or we're requesting, that we look at extending it through FY '22. It's supposed to end in FY '21, but we didn't start right away. We didn't start it till halfway through the first year. So basically, instead of only going four and a half years, we would be going five and a half years, but there's so much more to cover. I think that extra half semester is a good change for it. Also, our accreditation cycle ends in FY '22. Makes perfect sense for this to end in FY '22, because then we're not trying to explain two different plans to the crediting body. So those are the four things that I'm looking for as far as from the board.
Do I have a motion on all four items?
Second.
Moved by Board Member Tulkey, second by Board Member Ryder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Second report. Are you going to introduce yourself?
President Mickelson and members of the board, I am Stephen Williamson. I am the new director of the Southeast Tech Foundation. I'm here to introduce myself and to provide some immediate initiatives that we're working with at the foundation. For those of you who I have not met, I am originally from South Dakota and grew up in Pierre, was mostly in Sioux Falls for the last over 20 or 30 years, have been in Chicago and Naperville the last four years, working at North Central College as a major gift officer, and just returned to South Dakota here about two months ago. I'd like to say first and foremost, that group over there, and I know that it might sound like I'm sucking up here a little bit, but they're actually quite strong. I've worked in some administrations, and that's a strong group of people over there, and they're very dedicated to education and to the mission of Southeast Tech. And I think I've been very nicely surprised with how strong they are. So you can feel good about the leadership out at Southeast Tech. Right now, as Tracy said, we were about, we're over halfway through a $6.2 million capital campaign that was started very well by my predecessor, Shelley Unruh, who has moved on to work for the city of Sioux Falls in Meritun, Haken. It has, I am very happy to see with what has been accomplished so far, the business partnerships that have been created, actually, actually rather astounded at how well this institution works with the business community. Obviously, we can always improve, and we will improve, and we'll get better and things of that sort, but I think it's actually, I thought it was surprising when I looked at the donor list and things of that sort. Some of my immediate goals right now, and obviously we'll have larger goals later on, but there's some, there's some things that we need to do right now. Obviously, I need to get out and meet as many of the foundation board members as possible, and I've done that, probably met about 90% of them so far. One challenge we have is a lot of our historical data as far as giving was on QuickBooks and Excel spreadsheets and things of that sort. And we, thankfully, Shelley, before she left, Shelley Unruh left, she was able to, and Eric Van Lachter, they went and have placed into service eTapestry, which is a really good donor management system. And it's really tough to really, if you really want to do great foundation work, not to have a quality donor management system. So we've got that up and running, but we're starting to populate it right now with historical data and historical giving. We're probably about 20% of the way through that process, so we've got a little ways to go. We think we'll get that all done here pretty quick. But what that allows us to do is, it allows us to, it allows us to go and be able to see who has a, who has a connection and who has a relationship historically with Southeast who has a, who has a connection and who has a relationship historically with Southeast Tech. So, because as we all know, the easiest donor to communicate with is the one that you already have. It's, it's just like any business. We want to identify more Southeast Tech alumni to actually serve on the foundation board. That is one initiative that I'm going to be laser focused on, is adding some actual alumni to the board of our fundraising board and identify some persons there. We need to evaluate the endowment that is held down at the Southeast Sioux Falls Area Community Foundation. We want to make sure we're maximizing how that works with our enrollment management process and make sure that that is available at an appropriate time to go and be used in the recruiting process and things of that sort. As Tracy said, we're looking at, well, we're not looking, we're going to outsource our grant writing services to secure what we hope are significant dollars in workforce development services for underrepresented populations and then other strategic initiatives. And we will be, next week, we're having our foundation board meeting. And I've asked Sharon Shantos of Sage Productions to come and meet with the board. My personal opinion is I think she might, she's as good as any grant writer out there and she's an old friend. And I'm ecstatic, I just got off the phone with her and I'm just ecstatic that she's going to possibly come on and work with Southeast. We need to grow our donor base in width and height. We just need to go and expand it. We've had a nice group of businesses that have done a very nice job historically of supporting Southeast Tech, but we need to grow that base, whether it's a $5 donor or a $5 million donor, it doesn't, it's all good. But we need to go and expand that base. We need to create and grow our current partnerships. As Tracy was saying, we've had a lot of nice growth with the Build Dakota program from somewhere in the 20s as far as sponsorships to the 60s and now to 100. I think that program is something we, all of us in South Dakota can feel very, very, very proud of. Coming from Illinois, I was not aware of a program like this in Illinois. Who knows? We need to perpetuate to all of our constituencies the incredible value in need for technical education. I think the ROI on the technical education, the job opportunities, the lack of debt that a person can have when they get out, I think it's important to communicate. We need to raise more scholarship dollars. I take this one very personally. I am laser focused on student debt right now. And I have no problem talking to as many people as possible as far as that this is becoming a much bigger issue than I think that we all need to recognize. One of which was that article in the Argus Leader last week about the number of millennials who suffer from depression. That is a direct correlation, if you'll see, with the amount of debt that they're incurring while they're coming out. So I'm laser focused on Southeast Tech leading and not having the expectation that someone's going to bail us out or something like that, that we're going to lead and we're going to find more dollars for students. And last but not least, and definitely not least, provide exceptional stewardship. It's not hard to say thank you to a donor, but it's not, a lot of places don't do it particularly well. And that will not be us. We will do an exceptional job as well as I can do of providing tip-top stewardship of our donors at no matter whatever level they're given. So, I am open to questions if you have any.
Well, welcome back, Stephen. Stephen and I were in college together, we've known each other a long time. I just think bringing in Sage and Sharon Shantos is phenomenal. I've worked with Sharon, she's my backdoor neighbor. She is the best in the state for grant writing and you can't hire someone as good as her for what she does as a consultant and, yeah. And her connections within the state, she has so many connections in the state. So I think that's a great idea. And, you know, when you have a large capital campaign, 6.2 million, and I think it's always easiest to get to that first. It's now we're at kind of the middle, it's getting that second half of the money is the hard part. And we are here to support you, so, you know, connections or asks or whatever, you know, reach out to me at least, I'm offering my services to do that because it, we need to get this and then we need to be successful for this school to be listening.
Absolutely, thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, appreciate it.
Do I have a motion on the foundation update report?
Someone.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do I have a motion for executive session?
I'm just really excited about this.
I know. Just can't, new page. You probably haven't got yours yet.
Andrew just handed us. Admin to others, other schools.
No, you're, she has everything, we just got them.
We haven't gotten the Sioux Falls one yet, but we
I didn't get the first and second on this last motion, I got them on everyone else.
Voices.
You know who I am.
I know, and we're so short down behind the mics and screens, it's hard to see what's talking.